Good evening. If you will, join me in a moment of silent prayer and certainly we want to keep in our thoughts those affected by the bombings in Boston. Those flags at half-staff are certainly a reminder to us all. If you will, bow your heads for a moment of silent prayer. Amen? Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
And here comes our runner at the -- to the council.
Just in time.
Just in time. And Mr. Gilli, you might want to tell us where you've been.
Well, in the two days after the tragedy in Boston, our city recreation department, along with Fleet Feed and the Middle Half Organization, were able to put together a run tonight in honor of and a memorial of that tragedy that was referred to as Borough for Boston out near Gateway Island. The options you have were to run 2.62 miles, which is the equivalent of a marathon moving the decimal place over one, or 4.09 miles to represent the four hours and nine-minute mark at which time the first bomb went off. And I'm very proud to say of how well organized the event was tonight and the hundreds upon hundreds of people that showed up, some walking, some with strollers with kids, some with their dogs, some runners, and about 12 or 15 former Boston Marathon runners leading the start of the race tonight. But great event for our community, speaks well for our city.
Well, thank you for being at least our representative there, and we certainly welcome you back in time for our meeting. I believe we have a Stars presentation tonight. Ms. Logan, Ms. Shannon Logan is the Ring Leader, and I think she has a presentation for us tonight. Ms. Logan, go ahead.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. I would like to present for you the Stars Award. It'll be in April, but it's always for the month previous, which was for the month of March. And this month, our award is to our first part-time employee for the city of Murfreesboro. As you know, we have a large part-time employee staff, and they are just as instrumental and contributory to the success of this city as our full-time staff. And so at this time, if Mr. Clint Thomas from our Transportation Department, one of our Rover drivers, would please come to the podium.
And he may have a guest with him that he'd like to bring up also to be recognized.
And I'd also ask Ms. Nellie Patton, who is our Assistant Transportation Director for the city and who oversees our Rover program, to also come forward. Mayor, Clint Thomas represents all things that we're looking for in terms of what we are trying to achieve with the Stars Award in terms of just being a good customer servant at all times for the people of Murfreesboro. The story that was told was very telling, but when Clint was told about his award, he said, "Well, you know, I do that all the time, and I'd do it again." And to me, that just exemplifies what we're asking for in great customer service from our employees. So at this time, I'd like Ms. Nellie Patton, our Assistant Transportation Director, to say a few words. She'd like to say a few words about Clint. And then, Mayor, if you could come down, Clint's going to say a couple of words and join us in the presentation of his award.
Be happy to.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. I want to tell you a little bit about why I nominated Clint for this award. On a Friday night late in February, a passenger and his family of four children arrived late at the Rover transfer hub for departure on the last run of the day for the Highland bus. Unfortunately, the Highland bus had already departed the transfer hub, and it was the last run of the day. Now, I got word from one of the full-time drivers that there was a family stranded at the hub, a father and four children, and he was trying to seek other means of transportation. He called a cab, and he was trying to call some of his friends. So in the meantime, I called Clint. I said, "Clint, there's a family left at the hub, and it's cold tonight." I said, "How many passengers do you have?" He said, "I've just got one guy. I can deliver him, and then I'll come back to the hub to see if the guy got a ride." So Clint said, when he got back to the hub, the people -- the family was still there, and when they saw that big green bus coming back to get them, the children started jumping up and down screaming for joy that the Rover came back to get them. So, you know, sometimes I think that maybe Rover can't compete with saving the life of somebody for the customer service award like the fireman or the policeman, but when that family saw that bus coming back to get them, that was a lifesaving moment for them. So I want to present to you tonight our awardee for the month of April, part-time operator, Mr. Clint Thomas.
Clint, we're always proud to do this and to recognize our employees, and you should take some great satisfaction being the first part-time employee. But I want you to introduce your guest there. She looks a little shy and bashful, but why don't you do that?
This is my lovely wife, Karen.
All right.
She's not shy and bashful, so she's going to stay there.
You may have a word or two you want to say.
Yes, sir. Okay, thank you.
Good.
Mayor, city councilors, and fellow citizens, thank you sincerely for this recognition. Acknowledgement from this group coupled with that of our customers serves as affirmation that the actions and duties performed by individuals beyond those simply listed on our job description are welcome and above all appreciated. I come from the private sector, where oftentimes the only way to set yourself or your business apart from the competition is to provide exemplary customer service. I know I enjoy good customer service. Furthermore, as a county commissioner in Wilson County, I strive to be conscientious of the needs of those in my community and a good steward of taxpayer dollars. What that means to me is that one should provide the public with the utmost of customer service in all aspects of any and all services offered. People should be treated with respect, dignity, humanity, and awareness that regardless of race, gender, age, religion, or socioeconomic status, we work for them, the taxpayer. Those simple principles carry over to my work at Rover. All of these things make a difference, and it's made easier still when you work with those that display leadership and vision for a department like Mr. Dana Richardson and Ms. Nellie Patton. It makes a difference, and it makes it easier still when you work with those that implement and administer at such a high standard that vision on a day-to-day basis like Mr. Ed Eskins and Ms. Lisa McCluskey. It makes a difference, and it's made easier still when your coworkers are so very helpful and supportive. Yet the biggest difference is the difference public transportation makes in the lives of our passengers every day. Public transportation offers independence and the means to provide for themselves and their families. No longer are they limited to employment and shopping in small geographic portions of the city, but can now branch out and be more fruitful and diverse, and more importantly, be a bigger economic driver for their, your, and our community. Once again, thank you for this opportunity and recognition, and I share this with my fellow Rover workers and part-timers, but I'm not going to share the check.
And there is a small stipend that's here, and maybe that'll pay your gas money to go over -- to go back over to Wilson County and be a commissioner. I should have recognized you. Congratulations.
Thank you again.
Very nice. Congratulations.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
So once again, I'd just like to congratulate another one of our Stars winners. Thank you again for your support of this program. It really means a lot, I think, to our city employees, and it's something that I think that they take a lot of pride in. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Logan, and we certainly are proud of your program and proud of all our employees, part-time and full-time, and thanks for being with us tonight. At this time, we have your consent agenda before you council members, or any questions regarding any of the items listed on the consent agenda. If not, is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve. Second.
Motion and second? Please call the roll. Ms. Wright.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. You also have the minutes of the April 4, 2013, regular meeting before you. Are there any additions, corrections to those minutes as they have been presented? If not, is there a motion to approve?
No move. Second.
Motion and second? Please call the roll. Ms. Wright.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. At this time, we'll consider for passage on third and final reading an ordinance to adopt the Greenways, Blueways, and Bike Ways master plan.
Move for passage on third reading.
Second.
Motion and second? Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilli.
No.
Ms. Gels Harris.
No.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
No.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. At this time, we'll consider for passage on second reading an ordinance to annex an area located along Memorial Boulevard north of West Thompson Lane.
So move. Second.
Motion and second? Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. At this time, we'll consider for passage also on second reading an ordinance to zone an area located along Memorial Boulevard north of West Thompson Lane to Highway Commercial CH District simultaneous with annexation.
Move for passage on second reading.
Second.
Motion and second? Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. At this time, we'll consider for passage on second reading an ordinance amending 18 acres of the planned unit development PUD district located along Swanholm Drive consisting of parcel L of the Victory Station PUD.
So move. Second.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Mr. Gilli, please call the roll.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. Consider for passage on first reading an ordinance amending Chapter 21, offenses and miscellaneous provisions adding Article II special events. Ms. McGannon.
Mayor Bragg, members of the council, this ordinance represents an attempt to consolidate and modernize the provisions that are currently in the city council. We have a parade permit, and we have a street closure, which aren't really adequate in their current format to address all the different kinds of special events that people want to have in our community. They also do not reflect what the courts indicate we need to do in terms of treating those special events in a nondiscriminatory way in terms of the support that needs to be given to them. This document represents the combined input of the departments who most frequently have to deal with special events: police, fire, solid waste, street, and the department that's sort of done the most and would still serve a primary role, the Transportation Department, and particularly our traffic engineer. It tries to include provisions that we believe will meet legal muster without being unduly You will note that we have a, as I say, consolidation of the two. We're not treating parades separately. It is saying that a permit is required unless it's the kind of spontaneous event such as Mr. Gilli participated in tonight, when something happens as a result of fast-breaking news and that it's a very short time period. It calls for permits to be applied for 30 days in advance of the event, but allows the city manager to waive that time limit if there is good cause shown. I would be happy to answer any questions about it, but before I open it up for that, I should perhaps add that we wanted to present this to the council and see if there are any council issues. We will, of course, be providing information about the ordinance, if adopted, to the various civic and charitable organizations that customarily have come to us for this type of permit. And we have in here a provision that any permits that have been granted for events happening after the effective date of the ordinance would be subject to the current terms, you know, the terms that were in effect at the time they got their final approval. That being said, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Do we have such a document?
I forgot one more thing. I forgot one more thing I should have said. We have a provision in there for fees and charges to be set separately by the council by resolution, so they're not reflected here, but that would come back to you before any were implemented. Now I'm done. Sorry, Mayor.
Do we have that document?
No, because there wasn't any point in presenting it to you unless it looked as though this was going forward. We'll present it to you before the effective date of this ordinance.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for Ms. McGannon regarding this ordinance on first reading? If not, is there a motion for passage on first reading?
So move, Mayor.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion and second? Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. At this time, pursuant to a resolution adopted by city council on March 21, 2013, we'll conduct a public hearing to consider an annexation request for approximately 1.02 acres located along South Church Street and Linford Drive at Joby Jackson Parkway, and to consider a proposed plan of services. Mr. PJ Patel is the applicant notice of the said public hearing was published in the March 31, 2013 issue of a local newspaper. Welcome, Ms. Ely.
Thank you, Mayor Bragg and council members. Good evening to you. Our first public hearing this evening is to consider annexing property that's located along the western side of South Church Street or Shelbyville Highway, Highway 231, just across from Joby Jackson Parkway. This property is located along the south side of Linford Drive, and the annexation would include approximately 281 linear feet of right-of-way of Linford Drive if you do decide to annex this property. The right-of-way to the -- continues with this property to the east is 231, is currently in Murfreesboro city limits. Properties to the northwest and south are all in the unincorporated area of Rutherford County. The subject area is our lots 45 and 46 of the Linford Oaks subdivision, and each are developed with a single-family house on each lot. The property owners have indicated that if this property is annexed and rezoned, that their intent is to demolish these two houses, which are in fairly poor condition, and redevelop the site. You can see from the maps that we've labeled the area, approved Walmart site, and that is the location of a Walmart store that's not constructed yet. They're waiting to begin construction so that it can coincide with the reconstruction of Joby Jackson Parkway, formerly known as County Farm Road, but they are moving forward with that project. To the north of the site identified as the approved Walmart is an area-owned PCD planned commercial district. The city will be able to provide services as outlined in the plan of services provided to you in your agenda. City sewer is not available to this property as it's located approximately 1,000 feet from this area to the east across South Church Street. There are options that the developer can use for managing its sanitary waste, but sewer is not available. Other city services are available and will become available immediately upon the annexation becoming effective. It's my understanding that MED is serving electricity to the property. Mr. Chris Ratcher is here this evening, and he's representing the applicant, so if you have any questions from him, I'm glad -- I'm sure he'll be glad to answer them. There is a companion zoning change request, which is the subject of the next agenda item. This first public hearing is to consider annexing these two parcels and its contiguous right-of-way. If you have any questions about the plan of service or as outlined, I'll be glad to answer them either before or after the public hearing, but you should conduct a public hearing prior to making your decision regarding this annexation. It was recommended by all seven members that this property is annexed.
All right. Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Ely regarding this annexation request? If not, I'll open the public hearing. At this time, anyone wishing to speak for or against this annexation request, please speak to the microphone and give us your name and address. Is anyone here wishing to speak?
Hi, my name is Mark Dixon. I'm very nervous, so please bear with me. I live at 114 Linford Drive, and thank you, Mayor, and council members for allowing my participation in this process. Because I don't know all the protocol of the annexation and the zoning, I'm just going to cut to the chase because my understanding is that this is wanting to be zoned as a -- for a liquor store?
We'll have a public hearing on the zoning in just a minute.
So should I wait till that time?
If your question is not so much to the annexation but to the zoning, yes.
Okay.
That would be appropriate.
I'll do that then.
If you want to have a seat right there on the front row, you can be first. Anyone wishing to speak for or against the annexation request? Yes.
Yes, sir. Mayor, city council, good to be with you this evening. I'm Roger Cronover from 108 Linford Drive. Should I also wait with Mark after the --
If you prefer just to talk about the zoning, yes.
Okay, I will.
Anyone wishing to speak about the annexation? If not, I'll close the public hearing at this time, and we'll consider for passage on first reading an ordinance to annex an area located along South Church Street and Linford Drive at Joby Jackson Parkway, and to adopt for the same a plan of services.
So move. Second.
Thank you. A motion and second to pass on first reading an ordinance to annex this area. Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. At this time, pursuant to a resolution adopted by city council on March 21, 2013, we'll conduct a public hearing to consider a proposed amendment to zone approximately 1.02 acres located along South Church Street and Linford Drive at Joby Jackson Parkway as Highway Commercial CH District simultaneous with annexation. Mr. PJ Patel is the applicant notice of the said public hearing was published in the March 31, 2013 issue of the local newspaper. Please proceed, Ms. Ely.
Thank you, sir. Our next item is to consider changing the zoning with the property you just considered for annexation simultaneous with its annexation. It's approximately 1.02 acres and does consist of two lots in the Linford Oaks subdivision, lots 45 and 46. As I mentioned before, there is a single-family house located on each of those lots, but it has been the indication from the potential developer that those will be removed, and then the site will be developed as one site. The property is located along South Church Street or Shelbyville Highway, Highway 231, south of Linford Drive. The properties that are located to the north, to the west, and to the south are zoned RM in the county, and that's a medium-density residential zone. The properties across South Church Street are zoned PCD planned commercial district. The property on the southeastern corner of South Church Street and Joby Jackson Parkway, which was formerly known as County Farm Road, is the future site of a new Walmart store. And just south of those properties are properties zoned CH Highway Commercial District. The property is located on the north corner of Joby Jackson Parkway, and South Church Street is zoned PCD, and that planned commercial district zoning program book calls for a larger store, possibly the size of a small grocery store, to be located in that area. With the plans and improvements of the future Walmart store, the intersection of Joby Jackson Parkway and Linford Drive will become signalized, so currently there's no traffic signal there, but there will be a traffic signal there. It's also a part of the reconstruction of Joby Jackson Parkway that the city is currently moving forward with. The applicant's contention is that the conditions have changed in this area, and they don't -- do not believe that these lots are well-suited for single-family use and believe that it would be more appropriate for it to be zoned CH Highway Commercial District due to its location and the changes within the area. There are some properties along South Church Street for which the county has either changed the zone or issued a conditional use permit to allow a form of a home-based business or commercial business, although they are small in nature. There are, and if you rate a comment, staff does have some concerns with the existing conditions, so if this property were zoned CH and redevelopment were to happen, we would require that the developer make improvements to Linford Drive, that may be to improve the depth and also the width of the property, and also to have that -- have them participate in any of the signalization and alignment with the future signal that will be located in this area. They, of course, will be required to meet minimum standards, and with -- if these two lots are combined and a new structure is built, then it's likely that they'll be able to meet our minimum standards with buffering, drainage, and street improvements. Again, Mr. Chris Ratcher is here this evening and able to answer your questions. I don't know if you have a presentation prepared, but no, he doesn't have anything formal prepared for you, but he's here. The planning commission did recommend that this zoning change be approved simultaneous with the annexation, and that recommendation was unanimous the night of the public hearing. If you have any questions about this, I'd be glad to answer them either before or after the public hearing.
Any questions regarding the zoning request for Ms. Ely? If not, I'll open the public hearing at this time, and I think Mr. Dixon is first, and Mr. Cronover would be second. If you would like to speak, and anyone else wishing to speak, please give us your name and address.
Thank you again. My name is Mark Dixon. I live at 114 Linford Drive. While I understand the need and importance of the city to grow and to expand, to continue to do that, I believe the community and my neighborhood would be better served by having a different kind of business other than a liquor store in this particular area. On the short, two-mile stretch of South Church Street between Warrior Drive and Linford Drive, there are currently four existing liquor stores, all on the same side of the road as this one that's being proposed. It seems to me that we may already have enough of this kind of business in this area of town. I have nothing against a liquor store, per se, but I don't understand why we would need to have it at the entrance to our neighborhood, especially when it isn't just taking up the corner of our street, but would actually be extending into our neighborhood. Our neighborhood is already well-established and fully-developed. The way our neighborhood is already structured, I believe, makes it uniquely different from most of the other developments in Murfreesboro that have integrated commercial zoning with a residential neighborhood. The proximity of our neighborhood to what is being discussed as commercial property on our side of South Church Street is much closer than in most other areas, making a liquor store seem like an especially unusual business to put in this location. Linford Drive itself is a narrow dead-end street, but it doesn't reach the dead end until about a half-mile down the road. There are approximately 30 homes directly on Linford Drive, and close to 100 homes in this entire enclosed neighborhood. Linford Drive is currently a quiet street with children and pedestrians, and with very little traffic besides the people who live on our street. With business like a liquor store being put in our neighborhood, I would assume that we'd get more outside traffic, which would generally affect the dynamics of our neighborhood probably negatively. And at what point would this new traffic unfamiliar with our street realize that there is no easy outlet? And drivers unfamiliar with our street, I believe, would cause it to be less safe. There would most likely be a need for substantial signage to help make unfamiliar traffic aware that our street dead ends, and that they would need to be slow and aware of children and pedestrians. Personally speaking, my property is 30 feet away from the edge of the property currently being discussed and considered for this liquor store. The proposed area, my neighborhood and house. My wife and I have two teenagers and an eight-year-old living in our home, and we have concerns with the liquor store being so close to our home, including for the safety and well-being of our family. My family also often has other teenagers and young children to our home, many times for the purpose of Bible studies and other church-related activities. I'm not sure that having a liquor store 30 to 50 feet away would be appropriate for this. There are a number of vacant business structures in our area, and a lot of undeveloped properties right on South Church Street, so it's right on South Church Street, so it's difficult for me to understand why the corner entrance to our neighborhood would need to be the top consideration for the development of a liquor store. If it's important for the growth of the city and area for commercial business to be located at the corner entrance to our neighborhood, I would hope more consideration would be given to a more upscale business, such as nice office buildings or something of that nature, something that might be more appropriate for our neighborhood and more conducive to the kind of future growth the city might like to see in this area. I also have a petition of over 55 people in our neighborhood who are against having a liquor store at the corner of Linford Drive and South Church Street. I would ask that you strongly consider not approving the two lots to be redeveloped for the purpose of a liquor store. Thank you.
Others wishing to speak?
Thank you. I echo all the remarks that Mark just made.
You might want to repeat your name and address for us.
Yes, sir. Roger Cronover from 108 Linford Drive.
Thank you.
Mayor Bragg, City Council. I'm here to speak, as Mark was, against the annexation and proposal of a liquor store. And my wife and I have lived at that residence for right at 11 years. It was a great neighborhood and still is, and as Mark mentioned, we have a lot of families there, a lot of kids there, and growth has been endless. And we, as you probably believe, this is only the beginning of many changes in that particular area. My wife and I live even closer than Mark and his family. The liquor store is right in our front yard and will be. So what we are talking about is our area being trashed and devalued. How would any of you feel if your front yard had that? I understand that growth is good and Rover is a great thing for those who need transportation. We all believe from this area, not so much. So for the betterment of the area and respect and dignity for the residents who live there and have for many years, we strongly ask respectfully that you deny this annexation for a liquor store on Linford Drive in our front yard. Thank you for your time, your thoughtfulness, and your reconsideration for all of those concerned. Thank you.
Others wishing to speak for or against?
Good evening, Mayor Bragg and council members. I am Chris Ratcher, commercial real estate broker for Red Wilty at 522 Uptown Square. I'm here tonight representing Ms. Barnes, who has the parcel on the corner, and the Thomases, who have the parcel behind Ms. Barnes. As you all know, this area is poised for a lot of changes, as one of the speakers just mentioned. Ms. Barnes has lived there for quite some time. Matter of fact, her property is not a part of the original Linford Oaks subdivisions. It was the old farmhouse that was originally there before the development of the Linford Oaks subdivision. It's an old farmhouse from the 1950s and is in very ill-repair. Ms. Barnes has lived there quite some time, and she is at her retirement age, and she'd like to live her retirement years out in some peace and quiet. And she's been very patient at this location, and she's seen the Tennessee Department of Transportation come and take most of her front yard to widen the road to basically a five-lane road. It put her house right on the edge of the road. Now she's also seen that progress is coming with the new Joby Jackson Interstate exit, which will have a traffic light right in her front door. She's on a corner lot with a traffic light. There'll be traffic coming right in her front door with the traffic lights. She's also going to see the world's largest retailer, Walmart, develop across the street from her, and she'll be looking out her front door at parking lot lights and traffic of the Walmart 24 hours a day, 7 days a week. We believe that this particular piece of property is no longer suited or no longer conducive to residential enjoyment that she would like to enjoy. We think it's best suited and the highest best use is commercial usage, and we would ask for your support in the rezoning of that. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
Hi, I'm Liz Barnes. I live on the corner of Shelbyville Highway and Linford Drive.
It's the street address?
3508 Shelbyville Highway is the --
Thank you.
Correct address. I've lived there over 20 years. When I bought that house, it was the farmhouse. There was no subdivision. The highway was a two-lane highway. I had a big, beautiful front yard. I was going to retire there and be there till the day I die. That was going to be Grandma's house that my 10 grandchildren would remember. Well, things have changed. There is now a subdivision. The highway took half of my front yard. There is no place to expand the septic system. Traffic has gotten worse all day and all night. I get to listen to sirens rushing up and down the highway, fire trucks, ambulances, police cars, waking me up in the middle of the night. I cannot afford to fix my house. It isn't worth fixing. It's falling down around me. The only thing that house is good for is a nice bonfire. I need to move. I beg you. I beseech you. I plead with you. Please rezon my property so that I can sell it, move back to Georgia so that I can help my daughter who has health problems. Let me live the rest of my life somewhere that is peaceful and quiet and no traffic. I beg you. I'll bribe you with lifetime supply of chocolate chip cookies, if that will help. Please, please. Things have changed. It's not like it was 20 years ago. The precedent has been set. From my house back to the river, you've got commercial property on both sides of the highway, and behind all of that commercial property, you've got subdivisions, you've got condos, you've got apartments. The precedent is set. Why should it stop at Linford Drive? Please, please, please rezon my property. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
Good evening. My name is Stacy Thomas, and I live at one of the properties. It's 107 Linford Drive. I would love to have it rezoned and annexed. I know everyone says that it is a great neighborhood to live in. The closer you get to our -- I mean, I've got four grandkids, so the, you know, my kids are just as close to it as anybody else's to the Walmart, and they recently cut down the rest of our trees that were in the front of Mrs. Barnes' house just a couple weeks ago. So when Walmart does come in, we're going to have all the streetlights glaring right in our front yard because those trees are now gone because of the power lines and so forth. So I would love to move, you know, to where my grandkids can play in the streets and so forth. And I think the last hearing, it was proposed that they put up a sign that says "Dead End" right at the beginning of the subdivision, and I think that would help tremendously for people not going all the way down into the subdivision. Currently, you don't see very many people walking towards the very end of the subdivision, just a few that run down 231 and through the park and around through the neighborhood. But I am all for it, you know. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Teresa Watson, and I'm going to say I'm kind of glad to see we have an officer back here. I may need an armed guard to get to my house. My family has actually owned the entire area that is now Linford Oaks since the 1950s, and the house that Ms. Barnes lives in and the house that Mrs. Thomas lives in actually was part of a huge parcel of property that my family owns. And at the time we sold all the property for Linford Oaks to be developed, we were in a rural area. The integrity of that rural residential-type area has been compromised for many years with the zoning that allowed the development for Walmart, all of the development that's happened over at Savannah Ridge, all the development that's been down in the Barfield-Crescent area. It comes with change, and we've recognized that. My family recognized that. I have two brothers and a sister. We own Lot 47, which is directly adjoins Lot 46 that the Thomases own. We also own 3518 Shelbyville Highway. We own 3536 Shelbyville Highway, which is the five acres that directly surrounds that and fronts Shelbyville Highway in front of Walmart. I just have to say that our family, I represent our family, my two brothers and sisters in saying that we've been neighbors with the Thomases and with the Barnes. We have been in zoning limbo for many, many years. The tract of property that I own at 111 Linford Drive, which is Lot 47, has been for sale for five years. I have had not one offer, and the reason I haven't had one offer is because the people that have talked to us about it said, "Oh, this is a fabulous house." But you know what? We don't want to buy it as residential because you've got Walmart going across here and all this commercial development. The people that have talked to us about commercial development have basically said, "Ooh, I don't know. We don't want to buy it for commercial because you have tracts of land that are directly adjoining you that may or may not be able to be zoned commercially." So what I would just like to say is that we support the zoning change. We support the annexation. I would love to see Ms. Barnes come out of hostage and be able to move to Georgia to be with her daughter and with her family, and that our family just approves and recommends that you all approve the zoning.
Anyone else?
Good evening, Mayor Bragg and members of City Council. I'm Bill Huddleston, President of Huddleston Steel Engineering here in Murfreesboro. It's been well-stated --
Could you give us your address?
My address is 2357 River Terrace Drive.
Thank you.
My wife says I live at 2115 Northwest Broad Street. It's been well-stated, the situation of this property. It has changed over the years. It's on a four-lane divided highway now, directly across from the proposed Walmart, and this will be at a major signalized intersection. I've been working with Mr. Patel to determine what he could do with the property. We're looking at a small commercial center, two to four businesses. He realizes from the discussion at Planning Commission that he will be required to improve the roadway of Linford Drive in front of his development, and what we will be looking for is an access not only on Linford Drive, but also a right-in, right-out onto Highway 231. So if somebody did come to Linford Drive and realize they didn't want to be on that road, they could come through this development and go back out onto 231 very easily. We now have rules in place that provide for good developments in this city. We will be required to go back through Planning Commission for site plan approval if we get this zoning. At that time, we will be required to provide very significant buffering between this development and the residences behind us. We will also be required to prove that we will have insignificant lights spill over into their property. Likely at this time, the building will be on the front of the property. We'll need the back of the property for septic tank field lines. This property is not suitable for residential, so we do ask that you rezon it to commercial highway. Thank you.
Others wishing to speak? Last chance? Anyone else? If not, I'll close the public hearing at this time. We'll consider for passage on first reading an ordinance to zone an area located along South Church and Linford Drive at Joby Jackson Parkway as a highway commercial CH District
Mayor, I have a question for Ms. McGann and just to help us clarify on this. The request is to zone it in a bulk zoning format of commercial highway. What the neighbors who spoke to her concerned about, their concern, I don't think, is about commercial, per se, but it's about what the anticipated use that they presume to be coming. From our perspective, can we look at the anticipated use, or do we just have to look at the commercial versus residential issue, or is there somewhere in between there to look? Can you help us with that?
Certainly. You would need to consider all of the uses that are allowed in a commercial highway zone, liquor store simply being one of those, but you would not have a basis for excluding that use or requiring that it be used for that use if you go with the requested zoning. You always have the option of having a less intensive or lower level of commercial zoning or not making a zoning change at all. One of the things that the council has done in the past is express its belief that a planned development would be more appropriate and deny a rezoning -- sorry, deny a simultaneous with annexation zoning request and indicate an interest in seeing a planned development. But it would not be appropriate for you to make a decision simply on one of the many uses that are allowed in this zoning district. Is it responsive to your --
It is. Thank you, ma'am.
Toby, I'm very much like you. I think the property, realistically, it's across from Walmart, it's on Highway 231. It needs to be a commercial highway. I certainly have concerns, which I always have, whenever we've got a neighborhood that's connecting up to property, what is going to go on that property? And I do think that this is probably one that we would like to see a planned development on because for the neighborhood, it seems like an inappropriate use for the property. I have no problem at all with it being used commercially. I just think that putting a liquor store at that particular location, going into that neighborhood, would be potentially an inappropriate use for the property. I really -- it appears to me that the road lines up with Joby Jackson. I assume it's going to be a signalized intersection before long, and it will have access to 231. So, I mean, there will be an improvement there, I assume. Certainly with the annexation, I think if the city belongs -- or if the property now becomes part of the city, then minimally, we need to absolutely go out there and put a "Dead End" sign to prevent people from going into that neighborhood so that they're notified at the road that, you know, down the road here, you don't have to turn around and come back out, and that there is no back way in or out of this neighborhood. So having said that, I, you know, I'll let somebody else make the motion, but I've got real concerns with putting a liquor store. It's not the use of the property that I have a problem with as far as the commercial development because I think that's coming, but I do have a problem with -- But I do have a problem with giving just a wide-open zoning and allowing them to put anything there, whether it be an adult bookstore, whether it be a liquor store, whatever. I think there has to be some protection for that neighborhood there, so.
And I think as the area grows, we'll see other proposals for liquor stores, especially with Walmart coming. But looking, if it's really within 50 to 100 feet of someone's residence-
30 feet.
30 feet, I think there's some reason it has reservation about particular uses, perhaps.
Any questions for staff regarding when Joby Jackson is going to be prepared? I believe it's anticipated the end of the year it's going to be, that section is going to be open and signalized. Is that correct? Thank you, Mr. Richardson, for saving me from going out on too big a limb.
That was part of the plans approved with the Walmart site, and it will be done in conjunction with that. Don't have an exact timeframe, but my understanding is that that would be coming forth later this year.
No, November.
And that Walmart won't be open until 1st of next year?
It would be sometime after that, yes. But it's part of that project, and of course, in conjunction with that and parallel to it, we are undertaking the widening project of the Joby Jackson Parkway from there to the I-24 interchange, and that will be ongoing very shortly. In fact, council's already approved that bid.
Has that street name already been changed, or is that still county farm?
That's already been approved for the Joby Jackson.
And the only question I have is, Ms. Thomas says she owns the property next to it, which is five or six, eight times bigger than these two lots. Plus, the one behind her is vacant.
So there's definitely going to be a liquor store at the entrance here?
But I don't, I think the thing that we, as a council, have to be very careful with right now, and I would defer this to Ms. McGannon, that we're looking at a zoning on this property, and I don't think it's our, we can't, I think we set ourselves up as a council for-
What's the legal ramifications for saying that we're looking at a zoning here, that we just can't say we don't like what's going there?
You should consider the uses that are allowed in Highway Commercial, Commercial Local, Commercial Fringe, if, and decide based on all of the uses when you're talking about bulk zoning, rather than what may or may not turn out to be a use, and if the bulk zoning that's requested is granted.
But we can look at the totality of what those uses are and think if there are any number on the list in the bulk, that it would be preferable to an atomized list by virtue of a planned development approach.
Absolutely. I'm encouraging the council to consider all of the possible uses, and if any one of them is one that you would find makes that zoning inappropriate for that particular location, that would be a sufficient basis. But it would not be a basis to, you could not disallow a particular use.
And that was my point. I think there's multiple uses that would fall under Commercial Highway that may be inappropriate for this piece of property. It's not just the liquor store that I think is inappropriate for that particular location.
But I did want to add, Mr. President, the other illustration you gave is not allowed in that zone, so that would not be a concern.
You can have a adult bookstore.
It's not, no.
The part that I, I like being consistent, and I look at, we had a, each property stands on its own, but also, we had a property that was on 231, you know, corner of Cherry Lane a month ago, that we zoned Commercial Highway that was right next to a subdivision, or right next, there were adjacent homes to that. And the part that I think that we just need to be cognizant about, that if we're looking at these Commercial Highway zonings, that, okay, we need to look at that as a council on each individual basis, so.
Well, you know, one of the things the council has done, recommendation of planning staff, the Planning Commission, is to impose different buffering requirements based on the adjacent use, you know, the degree of commercial intensity and the degree of residential intensity. So, you know, that is only one way, but that you do reflect that difference in your bulk zoning standards currently.
And, you know, interestingly, the Walmart is there because those residents are across the street. I mean, part of the allure of having Walmart out there is all of the rural residential subdivisions that are so very nearby, and how difficult it is to get to their other stores. And so one of the reasons that Walmart is putting a store there is to serve those people in that rural residential area. Ms. Barnes, my daddy helped get that road widened out there, so I'm going to go ahead and tell you that when he was in the legislature, that's one of the reasons that road got widened and your front yard got taken away. So I'll just go ahead and take the blame for that now.
I'm thanking you all for my Christmas.
He's not getting any cookies, is he?
All right, council members, we've kind of been through this over and over again. Did I have a motion?
Mayor, one of the options that we do have, it's not an option, it's required, it's site plan review. Can we ask for a larger zoning, a larger buffer field due to the-
Not unless it's a planned development.
Okay.
Not in the bulk zoning. It's whatever buffer goes with that zoning. Is that correct?
Right. Now, that does not, of course, prevent an applicant from committing to expand yet. You know, we've accepted voluntary commitments to expand buffer zones before, when you've been considering bulk zonings that have been problematic.
We discussed in the Planning Commission, a need for a sign of some type to make sure that lost people didn't go way back up into the subdivision. That's something we can require at a site plan review.
Right. I mean, that's something the city could put up, you know, on the road generally, and require signs as people were exiting the property, that you required the property owners to put up on their own property. You could do both.
And the other issues about the screening of the dumpsters that are required, and the light spillage, a photometric plan is required.
I think that's all addressed in your existing standards.
And I'm not sure everyone's aware of that, is the point I'm making, that there is some safeguards, and some is a relative term, but they're pretty strong in site plan review, and they are required.
Yes, sir. The city has-
And they're geared toward the protection of the neighborhoods.
Right. The light spillage is a good example of something that the city now addresses that it didn't for many developments that we currently have.
I guess if this were being proposed as something else that would fall under Commercial Highway, and say that business closed in a couple of years, and then it decided it wanted to become a liquor store, it wouldn't be any different than the situation that we've got now of approving it, because, I mean, I think that if we, I understand that we can't pick what business goes there, and I'm assuming that it could inevitably become whatever it becomes, as long as it falls into the zoning that we're approving, and if we feel that its property is on a Commercial Highway at this point, then you kind of got to let happen what happens, I guess, as bad as I hate that. The area next to it, the large parcels of property, you've got to assume they're right behind it as far as becoming commercial. I mean, it's kind of a chain of events that takes place whenever a Walmart goes into an area. I think we're sending it on north of Memorial Boulevard now. And so, having said that, I'll make a motion that we approve the recommendation as presented.
I'd you have a motion to pass on first reading, a zoning for Commercial Highway for this, these two lots that we've just passed for annexation?
Second.
There is a second to have a motion seconded. Is there anyone else that would like to speak, or are there any questions regarding this motion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. At this time, pursuant to a resolution adopted by City Council on March 21, 2013, we'll conduct a public hearing to consider a proposed amendment to rezone approximately .9 acres located along Iron Gate Boulevard from Single Family Residential 15, RS15 District, to Highway Commercial CH District, James B. Haynes Family Real Estate. The applicant, notice of the said public hearing was published in the March 31, 2013 issue of a local newspaper. Ms. Ealy, proceed.
Thank you, Mayor Bragg. Our next public hearing this evening is for you to consider rezoning approximately .9 acres located north of Iron Gate Boulevard. This property is identified as the blue parcel on the map before you. It is contiguous with property that, to the north, is zoned OG, and to the east is zoned CH, Highway Commercial District. Properties to the south are zoned RS15, and properties to the west are zoned RS15. This is a portion of a parcel, a larger parcel, which is a total of 3.09 acres. 2.19 acres of that parcel is already zoned CH, Commercial Highway District. This portion of property is zoned RS15, and it was zoned such before the road was rebuilt in the area, and it was, the zoning line followed the anticipated route. The applicant is requesting that you consider changing the zoning of the portion of the property from RS15 to CH so that the entire parcel will be consistently zoned CH. Property is contiguous with property owned by Kroger and developed with a Kroger supermarket. The Planning Commission did recommend that this property be rezoned from RS15 to CH, and that recommendation was unanimous the evening of the public hearing. Mr. Rick Murphy is representing the applicant, and he'd like to have an opportunity to speak to you before your public hearing. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them at any time.
Thank you, Ms. Ealy.
Thank you, Ms. Ealy. This is, I'm Brick Murphy of the law firm of Murphy &amp; Murphy, and our firm is located at 805 South Church Street here in beautiful Murfreesboro. Also, I reside here in Murfreesboro as well. I represent the James B. Haynes Family Partnership. They own this .9 acre tract, which is a remnant that was left over when Iron Gate Boulevard and Windowwood Drive were built. So originally, there was a residentially zoned R15 tract, RS15 tract, and when the road came through, it kind of stranded this little piece. It orphaned it and put it in a block of commercial development. This commercial development in that area is already developed with a Kroger Center, et cetera, so it's already developed as commercial. And we believe that it's a logical move to rezone this little piece commercial so it's consistent with a directly adjacent commercial development that already exists. Mr. Sam Haynes is here on behalf of his family. Also, Mr. Bill Huddleston, President of Huddleston Steel, is working with us on this project. He's here as well. We'll be here to answer any questions you may have, and we just ask that you rezone it to Commercial Highway, and we appreciate your consideration.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Ealy before I open the public hearing? If not, I'll open the public hearing at this time. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this rezoning along Iron Gate Boulevard to Highway Commercial, please step to the microphone, give us your name and address. Is anyone here wishing to speak, for or against? Last chance. I'll close the public hearing at this time. We'll consider for passage on first reading an ordinance to rezone an area located along Iron Gate Boulevard to Highway Commercial CH District.
Move for approval.
I think it's a natural fit. I second it.
Thank you. Motion in second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. At this time, pursuant to a resolution adopted by City Council on March 21, 2013, we'll conduct a public hearing to consider a proposed amendment to rezone approximately 15.2 acres located along Memorial Boulevard from Single Family Residential 15, RS15 District, to Highway Commercial CH District, James B. Haynes Family Real Estate. The applicant, notice of the said public hearing was published in the March 31, 2013 issue of the local newspaper. Ms. Ealy?
Thank you, Mayor. Our next public hearing is for you to consider rezoning property that's located along Memorial Boulevard. It is located along the western side of Memorial Boulevard and extends from Adams Place, which is owned PUD, Plain Unit District, all the way north to the existing post office site. And you'll know that there's also a restaurant located on the corner of the post office site. This property is a portion of property, of a larger parcel. The request is for you to zone 15.2 acres of an existing 98 acre site to CH, Highway Commercial District. This is measured as 350 feet from the edge of the right-of-way back, and so you can see that the shape is a linear fashion, and that is what the request is. The property that is located to the north is zoned CH, Highway Commercial District. Properties located across Memorial Boulevard are currently zoned Single Family Residential District and RD. However, there's an application to change the zonings for those properties to Commercial Highway District. Also, across Memorial Boulevard, property is zoned CH, which is the location of yet another future Walmart store located in our community, and this is the one located on Memorial Boulevard. There will be a future road, which is tentatively named, and I think this will be the final name, Lieutenant Patrick McBride Drive, which will be signalized, and any future development would have access to extend that road through the property. So this is just the frontage of an existing portion of property and does not, is not being considered to change the zoning for the entire parcel. Planning Commission did recommend this zoning change unanimously the night of the public hearing. Again, Mr. Brick Murphy is representing the applicant and would like to speak on this matter before your public hearing. I'll be glad to answer any questions you have at any time.
Thank you, Ms. Ealy. Good evening again, Mayor Bragg, members of the City Council and staff. Once again, I'm Brick Murphy of the law firm of Murphy &amp; Murphy. And once again, I live here in Murfreesboro. My firm is located at Suite 21 and on Church Street in Jefferson Square. The Haynes Family Partnership is requesting the rezoning of this 15.2 acres along Memorial Boulevard. The current zoning classification is RS15, and we're asking it to be rezoned to Commercial Highway. This 15.2 acres is directly across the street from the proposed Walmart, which was recently approved for a site plan across Memorial Boulevard, and it's between Adams Place and then the existing Commercial as well. The proposal is for the frontage along Memorial Boulevard to be rezoned. It's 350 feet deep from Memorial Boulevard back, and this property is bounded by the remainder of the Haynes Family Partnership property, which is a very large piece of property. There's 75 acres between this property and the closest adjacent residential property behind it. So, and there's also, part of that 75 acres is the 231 West Drainage Basin, which will never be developed at all. So the Hayneses have a large piece of property that they are not asking to be rezoned right now, and this property is very far away from any residential homes. This would, the proposal would allow the Hayneses to have essentially seven commercial out parcel-type lots for restaurants or other commercial uses. The Hayneses are proposing to go above and beyond the requirements for buffering between this proposed development and Adams Place. They're proposing- They're proposing a Type D buffer even though that would not be required. They're doing that because they feel like that's the right thing to do, to be sensitive to the residents of Adams Place. We feel that this rezoning is a logical extension of the commercial along the Memorial Corridor, the Walmart that's going in across the street, and the commercial that's already on that side of the street. We've done quite a bit of community outreach in regard to this rezoning. We've met with Mr. Adam Coggan with Adams Place. We sat down with him and the development team and talked about this project at length and I believe he's comfortable with it. We also reached out to some of the neighbors that live across the street. As Ms. Ely said, there's a proposal to rezone some of the houses across the street, but there are some people who live across Memorial Boulevard who are not part of those zoning efforts and who live there. One of those people is Mr. Hoyt Barrett. He's a very well-respected former retired contractor here in town. We sat down with Mr. Barrett. He's comfortable with the rezoning. He is not present tonight, couldn't be here, but he would like me to tell you that he's in support of the rezoning. Also, his neighbor, Ms. Laverne Fitzpatrick, who owns the neighboring property, which is also residential, she supports the application as well. Mr. Bill Huddleston is here with Huddleston Steel Engineering. He's involved in this project as well. He's here to answer any questions you may have. And Mr. Sam Haynes is here on behalf of his family. If y'all have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them and we just ask you to vote in favor. Thank you very much.
Any questions from Ms. Ely regarding this rezoning request? Anything before I open the public hearing? If not, I'll open the public hearing at this time. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this proposed rezoning, please step to the microphone, give us your name and address. Is anyone here wishing to speak?
City Council, Mr. Bragg, I appreciate the opportunity to speak.
Name and address.
My name is Ronnie Page. My property is 2034 Memorial Boulevard, which is next door to the Walmart store. That area over the last number of years has changed dramatically. I actually own the house and it's a rent property for me now. The house when it was first built, it was two-lane highway and I won't go into depth, you already know that. But it's changed. I have soccer fields behind me, which is city property. I have the Walmart store next door to me. The north end of the, going north, the north end of the Walmart property, where you're going to put the red light to go into the Walmart property is where my driveway is at to go into this property. It makes it unrentable. Nobody's going to rent a house that they can't get out of. The only way that I can get the value of my property is for my property to go commercial also. My neighbor, which is my sister-in-law, Carol Bailey, can't be here tonight and I'm speaking for her too. She's all for this change because she's in the same situation I am. The area there is not fit for having residential homes. There's no subdivisions that would interfere with you rezoning this. There's nothing behind us but city property and the airport. Walmart's on one side of us. Across the street is where this property is. If you rezone that, then we're going to be isolated anyway, so. And one other thing, if you do rezone this thing, when our property comes up, it'll be more apt to go to. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
I'm Kathy Nobles and I live at 1447 Avalino Circle and my husband and I own the property directly across the street from the Haynes property at 2206 Memorial. We two feel like it's no longer suited for residential and that commercial is a much more appropriate zoning and we are very much in favor of it. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? If not, I'll close the public hearing at this time and we'll consider for passage on first reading an ordinance to rezone an area located along Memorial Boulevard to Highway Commercial CH District.
Move for passage on first reading.
Motion in second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye.
Pursuant to a resolution adopted by City Council on March 21st, 2013, we'll now conduct a public hearing to consider a proposed amendment to the planned unit development, PUD District located along Rucker Lane. Adams &amp; Parks Investments, applicant notice of the said public hearing was published in the March 31st, 2013 issue of a local newspaper. Ms. Ely.
Thank you, Mayor Bragg and council members again. Our next public hearing is for you to consider amending the PUD Plan Unit District program for property that's part of the Merrimott Springs development. The request is for you to amend a 44 acre portion of the overall development. The overall Merrimott Springs plan is approximately 640 acres, so you can see relatively speaking, this is a zoning amendment for a small portion of the property. You have in your packets and I believe couriered to you a program book that outlines the amendments that are being requested as part of this change. They are basically threefold. The first is to remove from the program the alley-loaded homes so that there will be no alley-loaded products constructed in this 44 acres. Then next is to remove all homes from around the mansion area, leaving it on its own lot of record, which will be approximately 2.9 acres surrounding that property. It will also amend the uses that the mansion, which I know Mr. McFarland's very familiar with us, he played basketball inside the mansion if I remember from the public hearing.
Did you set it on fire once?
No, that was not, oh, that's not true.
So that mansion could be sold as a separate part and not be required to remain a part of the Merrimott Springs development. It could possibly be used as a single-family home, a bed and breakfast, and event facilities for events such as wedding receptions. Could be used as an office, as a restaurant, or could possibly have three single-family lots with one of those lots containing the mansion area. And then the third change is to allow some additional recreational opportunities at the swimming pool and amenity area. Currently, there is a swimming pool plan for this area and they're requesting to add a playground with basketball courts and workout room to the amenity area. So if you do decide to approve this planned development program, those are the changes that will be affected. The book, which was, program book that was passed out to you will become a part of the record and part of the zoning for the property. If you have any questions about this, I'll be glad to answer them. I believe Mr. Rick Cantrell is representing the property. I think that's why he's here this evening. If you have questions, he'll be glad to answer those as well. Otherwise, you should conduct a public hearing and I would like to point out that the Planning Commission recommended this PUD amendment unanimously the evening of the public hearing.
All right. Any questions from Ms. Ely? If not, I'll open the public hearing now. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this amendment to a planned unit development, please step forward and give us your name and address. Is anyone here wishing to speak for or against? Not, I'll close the public hearing at this time. We'll consider for passage on first reading an ordinance to amend the planned unit development, PUD District located along Rucker Lane.
Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. McFarland has a question.
Mr. McFarland.
I just wanted to make a quick comment that it is true that Margaret and I did shoot basketball in the, that's a nice mansion. It wasn't considered a mansion when there were six college kids that were living in it, but it's a lot nicer now than it was. But I want to make a, I don't think it's, I want to disclose, my company owns a lot in Merrimott. It's not close to this, but I have no financial gain one way or another, but I always try to disclose those anytime that something like this comes up. So I'm not going to abstain because I don't have, as they say, a dog in the hunt one way or another, but just wanted to make that known.
Thank you, Mr. McFarland. Is that in a form of a motion?
That is.
Second.
All right. Mr. McFarland moves and Mr. Young seconds this passage on first reading to amend this planned unit development. Please call the roll. Ms. Wright.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye.
At this time pursuant to a resolution adopted by City Council on March 21st, 2013, we'll conduct a public hearing to consider an amendment to rezone approximately 21.9 acres located along Robert Rose Drive from Highway Commercial CH District to residential multifamily 16, RM16 District. North Church LLC is the applicant. Notice of the said public hearing was published in the March 31st, 2013 issue of a local newspaper. Ms. Ely.
Thank you again. Our next public hearing this evening is to consider changing the zone for approximately 21.9 acres located west of Robert Rose Drive and it's south of Medical Center Parkway. This property is currently zoned CH, Highway Commercial District, and Interstate 24 does run along its southern border. The properties to the, directly to the west of the property are the avenues, which of course are developed shopping center here in our community, which we're all very proud of. I mentioned I-24 is adjacent to the property as well. There's also, the remaining property is also zoned CH surrounding this area. The property is also located within our Gateway Design Overlay District 1, so it's based on a CH and it's in the GDO District. The request is for you to rezone the 21.9 acres, as shown in the purple area, to RM16, multifamily residential district. It will remain within the Gateway Design Overlay District, so all those design criteria and review will apply to this property. The Planning Commission did review a master plan for which this property was a portion of that master plan, which did identify this to be redeveloped as a multifamily in the future. Just yesterday, the Planning Commission reviewed a site plan for a new restaurant located at the corner of Maple Grove Drive, Medical Center Parkway, called Peter Dees, as initial design review and that was also consistent with the master plan. Final design review is anticipated to be sometime next month. The proposed RM16 district allows approximately, or allows 16 dwelling units per acre with some additional units if there are some density bonuses. This property is 21.9 acres, so it's estimated that 350 dwelling units could be constructed on the property, given its size. It could have a few more units if it offers amenities such as swimming pools, recreational fields, clubhouse, and those sorts of items we typically see. I did mention that this property is located within our Gateway Design Overlay District, so it would require a strict review of not only the design, but the architecture within the area. There are a couple other projects that you may have seen under construction, which are also located in the Gateway and zoned for multifamily purposes. One is Robert Rose Drive, just north of here, and then the other is along Manson Pike. If you have any questions about this, I'll be glad to answer them. Mr. Matt Taylor is representing the applicant. He's informed me he does not have a presentation, but would be glad to answer any questions you may have. The Planning Commission did unanimously recommend with all seven members present that this property be zoned from CH to RM16 while remaining within the Gateway Design Overlay District. I'd be glad to answer any questions that you may have either before or after the public hearing.
Any questions from Ms. Ely before I open the public hearing? If not, I'll open the public hearing at this time. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this rezoning along Robert Rose Drive, please step to the microphone and give us your name and address. Is anyone here wishing to speak? If not, I'll close the public hearing at this time. We'll consider for passage on first reading an ordinance to rezone an area located along Robert Rose Drive to residential multifamily 16, RM16 District.
So moved. Second.
Motion in second. Please call the roll. Ms. Wright.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye.
Pursuant to a resolution adopted by City Council on March 21st, 2013, we'll conduct a public hearing to consider an amendment to rezone approximately 6.9 acres located along Hazelwood Street from Highway Commercial CH District, 2.6 acres, and residential multifamily 12, RM12 District, 4.35 acres, all to residential multifamily 16, RM16 District. Kathy and Wayne Nobles of Period Construction Company and Oakland Properties are the applicants. Notice of the said public hearing was published in the March 31st, 2013 issue of a local newspaper. Ms. Ely.
Thank you again, sir, and council members. Our next public hearing is for you to consider changing the zoning for four parcels located north of Hazelwood Street and that are bounded by Las Cassas Pike and Old Las Cassas Road. They're identified as the orange color and the blue color parcels on the maps that you have before you. The property to the north is zoned RM16 and RM12, so they're both multifamily residential zones, to the north of the blue area. The properties to the north of the area shaded orange are zoned RM16, which is also a multifamily zoning. The property just south on the corner of Las Cassas Pike and Hazelwood Street is zoned CH Highway Commercial District and is currently developed, the funeral home. The property on the south side, closest to Las Cassas Road, is zoned RM16, multifamily residential district. The area shaded orange is currently zoned CH Highway Commercial District and it's approximately 2.6 acres. The area shaded blue is currently zoned, RM12, sorry. Looking, and the request is to change that to RM16. The difference would allow 16 dwelling units per acre as opposed to 12 units per acre and that's what the number after the RM means, is how many dwelling units is permitted per acre. As you can see, the four parcels have a regular shape and the applicant is requesting that the zoning for all four parcels be RM16 and that would help with any future redevelopment of the property and development of the property to those standards. Representatives of the applicant are in the audience this evening. Mrs. Nobles and her husband are here, as well as Mr. Bill Huddleston. I'm not sure, well, he was, he's not any longer. But Mrs. Nobles is here and she will be glad to answer any questions you may have. The Planning Commission did recommend that these four parcels be rezoned to RM16 unanimously. If rezoned as such, there could be approximately 110 dwelling units based on the acreage and the 16 dwelling units permitted per acre. And if you have any questions about this request, I'll be glad to answer them at any time.
Any questions from Ms. Ely before I open the public hearing? If not, I'll open the public hearing at this time. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this rezoning of an area located along Hazelwood Street, please step to the microphone, give us your name and address. Is anyone here wishing to speak? If not, I'll close the public hearing at this time. We'll consider for passage on first reading an ordinance to rezone an area located along Hazelwood Street to residential multifamily 16, RM16 District.
Move for approval. Second.
Motion in second. Please call the roll. Ms. Wright.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye.
Pursuant to a resolution adopted by City Council on March 21st, 2013, we'll conduct a public hearing to consider a proposed amendment to rezone approximately 1.77 acres located along Dill Lane from planned commercial development, PCD District, to residential multifamily 16, RM16 District. Mr. Larry Talbert is the applicant. Notice of the said public hearing was published in the March 31st, 2013 issue of a local newspaper. Ms. Ely.
Thank you again, Mayor, and council members. And for the final time this evening, this next public hearing is for you to consider rezoning approximately 1.7 acres or 1.8 acres from its current PCD, Plan Commercial District zone, to RM16. The property is currently zoned PCD and was zoned as such in 2005 as a part of the Tractor Supply Company planned development. The Tractor Supply Company does not utilize this property and it hasn't been included in the development of that project. So you have before you a request to change the zoning to RM16 to be similar to, or to be the same as the property contiguous with it on the south side. You can see the property to the south is zoned RM16 and the property to the east is zoned CH, Highway Commercial District. Property to the north again is PCD and that's the Tractor Supply Company. The properties across Dill Lane are zoned PRD and that's for a multifamily residential apartment complex and a portion of it is also zoned RS-10. The applicant desires to combine this 1.77 acres with the existing RM16 property to develop it as a continuation of the apartment complex. There is an example of a layout which has not been reviewed, as the site plan has not been reviewed by Planning Commission, but where they show a possibility of 28 dwelling units that could be developed on the orange property. It would share a parking area and amenities with the property to the south, but would make it a larger area that could be developed. The Planning Commission did recommend that this property be rezoned from PCD to RM16 so that it can be developed with the properties to the south. The vote was unanimous the evening of the public hearing. If you have any questions about this, I'll be glad to answer them at any time. Otherwise, you should conduct a public hearing and make your decision regarding the zoning change for this property located along Dill Lane.
Any questions from Ms. Ely before I open the public hearing? If not, I'll open the public hearing at this time. Is there anyone? Is there anyone here wishing to speak for or against this rezoning of an area located along Dill Lane? Is anyone here wishing to speak? If not, I'll close the public hearing at this time. We'll consider for passage on first reading and ordinance to rezone an area located along Dill Lane to Residential Multifamily 16, RM 16 District.
Move for passage on first reading. Second.
Motion and second. Please call the roll. Ms. Wright?
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Kels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye.
At this time, we'll consider recommendations of the Planning Commission to schedule public hearings to consider rezoning along Memorial Boulevard, rezoning along Manson Pike, annexation zoning, and simultaneous with annexation along John Bragg Highway, rezoning along Salem Highway at Casey Lane, and a PRD amendment to Winslow Park PRD, as well as annexation along 841 Osborne Lane. Welcome, Mr. Adalot.
Thank you, Mayor Bragg, members of the council. During this regular meeting on April 3rd of 2013, the Planning Commission conducted public hearings and studied the following items. After the public hearings, the Planning Commission recommended approval of these. These are being recommended to the council to schedule for public hearings for a future date. The first is a zoning application for approximately 9.62 acres along Memorial Boulevard to be rezoned from RS 15 to, and RD to CH. The second is a zoning application for approximately 39.8 acres along Manson Pike to be rezoned from RS 15 and Commercial Local to RM 16. The third is an annexation request for approximately 90.37 acres along John Bragg Highway. The fourth is a zoning application for approximately 20.86 acres to be zoned CH and approximately 39.76 acres to be rezoned or zoned to RM 16 simultaneous with annexation along John Bragg Highway. The fifth is a zoning request for several adjustments in zoning along the Ulas Cassas Highway at Casey Lane, several small intricate zones, but the biggest part is to be rezoned to Commercial Highway rather than read all those small ones. The sixth item is a PRD amendment for approximately 1.3 acres along, within the Winslow Park PRD, to reduce the numbers of units. And the final is an annexation request for approximately 1.81 acres along Osborne Lane. The council needs to schedule these items for public hearings.
Ms. McKannon?
Mayor, I would suggest May 16th.
Council members, you have May 16th. What are your wishes?
Move the public hearings for May 16th. Second.
Motion and second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Kels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye.
At this time, we'll consider recommendations of the Transportation Director to approve a contract with Wiser Company for design services for the utility relocation phase of the Broad Street Memorial Boulevard Separated Grade Construction Project. Mr. Richardson, welcome.
Thank you.
And I didn't thank Mr. Adalot, but thank you, Mr. Adalot.
Good evening, Mayor Bragg, members of council. I do have that one item before you this evening, which is a contract between the city and Wiser Company for design services for the utility relocation phase of the Broad Street and Memorial Boulevard Separated Grade or the bridge over Broad Street. This project has been a project that's been in development for a number of years. In fact, I've been working on this, I think, since the mid-'90s. And in 2002, the city council did unanimously adopt a resolution accepting the Tennessee Department of Transportation's plans and project proposal for the construction of this bridge, the roadway widening, and other project elements for this intersection. And I call this, to some degree, the "are you still on board" resolution because that's what the Department of Transportation requires of the governing body before they proceed to the next phase, and a very expensive phase, which would be to buy the right-of-way to accommodate any project that they are building. And with the approval of this resolution, the Tennessee Department of Transportation proceeded forward with the project and have purchased the right-of-way to accommodate the entirety of this design plan. As an integral part of the design plan, the roadway project also necessitates a relocation of all the utilities within the project limits. The need to relocate the utility further required the utility easements outside of the right-of-way purchased by TDOT for the project construction to be acquired by all the affected utilities, and this cost must be borne by the individual utilities. TDOT additionally provided a deadline for the design of the utility relocations to be completed in order that utility relocations be deemed eligible for inclusion in the overall project construction bid. And this is important from the standpoint that we certainly want the one general contractor for the construction part of the roadway project to be responsible for the construction portion of the utilities as opposed to having a lot of separate contractors and a lot of separate bids out for the project. And so it became obvious that the only practical way to meet some of the deadlines for the utility relocation plans and provide a consolidated method for relocation was that the plans be developed jointly and that the decisions for relocations of any one utility be considered respective of the other utilities in order to avoid conflicts and delays. And there are six utilities in this project, primarily Mercer Water and Sewer Department, Mercer Electric Department, higher city fiber optic network that is connected to the signal CCTV cameras and so forth, Comcast, Atmos, and AT&amp;T. And also, within the limits of this project, we are putting all the utilities underground. This is also, I think, in line with what was presented to council a couple years back, is the broad, if I can say this, Broad Street street scape plan wherein we were trying to improve the looks and the aesthetics along some of our arterial routes or older arterial routes in Murphysboro, one being South Church, for instance, and the other being Broad Street, and felt like that this was a good springboard and a location timing to go ahead and make this part of this project. The city offered to be the facilitator in a partnership with TDOT of this effort on behalf of all utilities in order to assure the coordination of the design, meet TDOT's deadlines for inclusion of utility relocations, excuse me, within the project construction contract, and minimize the impact of the affected property owners by acquiring one joint easement for relocated utilities as opposed to individual acquisition of easements being conducted by each utilities. The individual utilities have provided the city letters of intent to participate in the design and the costs associated with the design efforts, appraisals, and ultimately acquisition of the easements. Based on this representation, the city has provided some of the smaller front-end design services through Wiser Company to accomplish this task. It staffs intent before the larger funds are spent to actually acquire the easements that a contract between the city and the individual utilities will be crafted and executed in order to provide a more substantial legal assurance that the city will be reimbursed based on the appropriate costs that will ultimately be attributed to each respective utility. There are funds available in the cities of 2012 through 16, capital improvement program for acquisition of property, and in the first year of the CIP, in the year 2012, provides funding in an amount of $500,000 for this type of project. The cost of each individual utility will be a product of the design elements that are being identified in the design process, including space needs, amount of relocated infrastructure, and so on in division of cost. As a result, each utility will pay the fair share of the total of $299,503.75, cost of the recommended design contract. The city will pay the entire contract amount and be reimbursed by the utilities accordingly. And the division of cost is something that is being worked on and will be worked out between the utilities. In fact, that's one of the scope of services components in the contract with Wiser Company, is to look at the matrix for ultimately defining the cost share basis for each individual utility. It's something at this point in time that's fairly difficult to do without knowing where the actual relocation will be of each utility and the impacts of each utility. And this project is contained in our regional budgets, our regional plans. It's also part of the city's major thoroughfare plan for many years, and it is a component of the city's current CIP. With that introduction, I would recommend approval of the contract between the city and Wiser Company in the amount of $299,503.75 for design services associated with the design of the utility relocation plans, formulation of easement descriptions and appraisals associated with the Broad and Memorial Projects. And we would be coming back to you at later dates with contracts between the city and the various utilities based on the division of cost that we ultimately agree to on this. Of that being said, I'm here to be more happy to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions for Mr. Richardson regarding this recommendation? If there are no questions, is there a motion to accept?
So moved. Second.
Motion and second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Kels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye.
At this time, we'll consider recommendations of the Water and Sewer Board, but thank you, Mr. Richardson, first. Thank you very much. The Water and Sewer Board, Customer Information System Procurement Recommendation, Advanced Utility Systems Best and Final Offer, and Approval to Award Southwest Regional Pumping Station Bid and Resident Project Representative Inspection Services by SSR Engineering Work Order 0641-057.2, and SRF Loans Refinance Opportunity. Mr. Gore, welcome.
Thank you, mayor, members of the city council. I want to be as quick as possible here, but I want to be deliberate in going through this because this is kind of a, I would say, our first big kickoff for an information technology enterprise solution, at least with the Water and Sewer Department, and we've been working very closely with Chris Lilly, the city's IT director, and he's been a huge integral part in helping us move forward with this endeavor. So I want to take somewhat of a moment to educate and kind of go through the process. We, the Water and Sewer Department, have developed an IT master plan in conjunction with team effort with the city's IT master plan. The Water and Sewer Department does have a unique set of requirements. We have 315,408 annual meter reads that we have to, and bill mailouts each year. We have in-office customer services where we have move-ins, move-outs, new customers coming in, signing up for service. We have call center and account and premise management. That's some lingo there, but we also have field customer services where we have turn-offs, turn-ons and offs, when people move out and new customers move in, meter reading and replacement, and field service orders. We have a lot of calls for leak investigations. So this also ties into the effective utility management model that we are kind of using as our mission, that, bottom line, customer satisfaction, operational resiliency, operational optimization, and financial viability are four key elements in the 10 attributes that will be affected by this enterprise solution. This is kind of a busy slide, but what I want to highlight here is basically, we did a self-assessment, and we did, the red is the board's assessment and the black is staff's assessment that customer service, customer satisfaction is an area that's a high priority and that we can work on. It's something that needs improvement. We have roughly 100, over 100, this is kind of a graph that shows how many customer visits we have on a daily basis. This was for January of 2013. Some days, we have close to 120. We have about 250 total. That includes drive-through customers as well as in-office customers. So we have some days with some high traffic, people paying bills, people coming in to get, to get a new service moving into the city. This is a larger, kind of 30,000-foot view of, call it the IT circle of life here. Don't expect you to hit all these acronyms, but CIS is Customer Information System, AMI is the Advanced Metering Infrastructure that we'll be talking more to you about later. I've highlighted that with the, with the red balloon, that kind of, those are somewhat specific to the Water and Sewer Department. The other side of the coin with the Financial Information System, the GIS, and the Computerized Maintenance Management System, those can be enterprise solutions that we're probably going to be a little more integrated with the city as the city moves forward in those arenas. Give you a quick overview of how we read the meters. There are homes that you have a meter in your front yard. That's kind of like the cash register. We have meter readers go out, they record those, the dials, or how much water has been consumed. That is downloaded to software, and currently, we have a legacy COBOL system. You remember in college, if you took COBOL, it's been a great enterprise, and we've had it for 30 years now. It's been very stable, but it's time to upgrade. We then move that data to our bill preparer. That bill is mailed out, and you receive it in the mail. And then, again, you can drive through, you can mail it back, you can come in the office and pay. We did have a quick win with the help of Mr. Lilly. That was the easy-paced solution. We now are able to take credit cards online and over the counter. It's been a big help. The more people that pay online means the less foot traffic we have in the office, and it's more convenient to the customer. This kind of shows the, we've had about a total $100,000, is about where we've set on, that's only about 3% of our overall sales, but that's still, we have, the majority of that's online, and we do have some over, the OTC stands for over-the-counter transactions. But the step two, and kind of what we're currently approving, asking for your approval today, is to take that legacy system and put in a new customer system that's off-the-shelf, best-in-class. That's going to allow no longer there to be customized bridges. I've got these kind of archaic bridges here, but this is going to make this system ODBC compliant, open database architecture. It's going to be able to communicate with other software platforms. What that's going to allow customers, it's going to allow web interface, it's going to let them see their payment histories, their read dates, their usage history. We're going to be able to send e-billing and e-presentment options to them. Also notices, we'll be able to now send texts, voicemail, email, those kind of things. We'll be able to link our connection fees to our GIS, which I know has been something that we've needed to do. The procurement process that we went through to go, to find who our best-in-class vendor would be, we basically set up an evaluation criteria, functional requirements made up 45% of the total score, non-functional requirements 35%, and then costs made up 20% of the total score. This is what we call our Request for Competitive Sealed Proposals. It's a hybrid of cost and qualifications. We shortlisted, we did demonstration scenarios, we did final selection and solution confirmation with the best and final offer. It was a very structured process, and we vetted these vendors very, very thoroughly. We did come back with Advanced Utility Systems as rated the highest on the scoring evaluation, and that was through a team at the Water and Sewer Department. Mr. Lilly was also part of that evaluation team. Now, what that does is we are now, I'm sorry, that is what we're requesting, is to take the best and final offer from Advanced Utility Systems. In your packet, it gives the upfront cost of around $800,000, and then we show the annual maintenance fees associated with that software. This is kind of custom to the, to the software industry at this point, that this, you're paying roughly 10% to 20% of the upfront cost for an annual maintenance fee. They've got help desks, they've got support folks 24/7 that we can call and, and help us with issues. Our next step, step three, is we're going to be looking at some plugins or some add-ons to this system. It's going to be IVR, which is an interactive voice response. That's going to actually allow people to call in and pay over, over the phone with credit cards, and it's going to, we're going to actually create a true call center and be able to start measuring first call resolution and some metrics that we are not able to currently monitor. The next step, we're also, as a plugin to this CIS, it's called a MWM. It's a Mobile Workforce Management System. This is going to allow customer service clerks to take calls, generate service orders if there is a leak request, or if there is someone who says they have high consumption, they'll be able to generate that service order. It will actually go to the field wirelessly to the, to the guys in the trucks so that they're not having to travel back and forth to the office. They'll go out, do their investigation, close that work order out. Real-time, the customer service clerks will be able to see that that work order has been completed and be able to communicate that more efficiently to the customer. They'll go out, do their investigation, close that work order out. Real-time, the customer service clerks will be able to see that that, that work order has been completed and be able to communicate that more efficiently to the customer. Those, those, those RFCSPs have actually been approved for Weston to, they are in the process of creating those, and we'll be going out for best-in-class vendor selection on those software packages as well. That'll be coming back to you. I've kind of talked about the IVR, be able to do some service customers after normal business hours, the credit card payments, record, do an automated outbound call campaign, and we'll, we'll be able to record customer complaints and be able to maybe use that as education on customer service clerks and how they should best deal with those customers that maybe are tougher, tougher to deal with. The Mobile Workforce Management, it's going to lower operational costs, lower fuel, create a more timely response, hopefully generate higher customer satisfaction, minimize driving time, and enhance security and safety. Step four, this is farther down the road, but I do want to bring it up. It's the Advanced Metering Infrastructure. This is where the industry is trending, and the power, the power industry's already pretty much gotten there where you are wirelessly, wirelessly transmitting the reading on the meter to a data collector. That data collector takes the fiber and the ethernet and pipes it straight into your office. So it eliminates the need to actually have men in the field reading, or women in the field meeting readers, reading meters. So the water industry's moving there. The great, the neat thing about that is that it eliminates meter reading, it's lower operational costs. We also have a leak detection system as part of that, so we can reduce non-revenue apparent losses and real losses due to system leaks, and it allows us early leak notification. What we can now do is, the trick question is, how do you handle leak detection when you have your AMI, or leak complaints? Well, you don't get any more leak complaints because bottom line is, you're letting the customer know that they have a leak before they know, before they even know they have a leak. So it'll see usage throughout the night when usage is not customarily seen, and it can generate an automatic response to inform the customer that there may be an issue and they need to check some things. So it's a more proactive approach, lowers operational costs. Again, that's not what I'm, we're requesting tonight, but that's forthcoming. So what we're asking for tonight again is to adopt the request for the competitive sealed proposal process for the CIS procurement and the future software procurements, and then approve specifically the Advanced Utility, Utility Systems CIS Infinity and Infinity Le, Link, and the funding would be coming from the Water and Sewer Working Reserves. I know that was a lot of information. Hopefully I didn't go too quick, but if you have questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Any questions for Mr. Gore regarding the Customer Information System Procurement Recommendation and this best and final offer from Advanced Utility Systems? Mr. McFarland.
I just wanted to first say that I know we have the Stars Award, and I think that we need to create a PowerPoint award. Darren wins the PowerPoint award, so he always has very nice PowerPoint presentations.
Thank you.
We'll get you a plaque for that, Darren.
I'd personally like the plows.
Yeah, absolutely, and the bridges. That's pretty good.
That college education did something for me.
But seriously, I'm very proud of, of you guys, the Water and Sewer Department, the employees, because this is such a good step in the right direction, and we all know that there's not anything that's cheap about this, but the one thing that we also learned and we've seen over the years, that the, the longer that we wait to implement these procedures, the more expensive that it becomes. So, you know, it's, it's one of those things on technology that a friend of mine told me one time that, oh, those computers are fads, I'm not even going to use one of those, they'll go away. And this was her reason. Yeah, I was dumb. But I think this is something that is expected now from customers, and I am very excited to see you guys take the step forward and really appreciate the hard work of all the staff. And so with that, I would, if there's any other comments, I would move an emphatic approval of this.
Second.
All right, you have a motion and a second to accept this recommendation and best and final offer to Advanced Utility Systems. Are there any questions regarding that motion? If not, please call the roll.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye.
Please continue.
Thank you for that approval, item number one.
Oh, Ms. McGannon.
Yes, Mayor, Mr. Gore included as part of that, but I believe it needs a separate motion, the request to use the competitive sealed proposal process for the additional two items that he mentioned. That should be the subject of a separate motion.
So moved.
All right, Mr. Gilli and Mr. McFarland, please call the roll.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye.
Thank you again. The second item that we're asking for your approval is the award of the Southwest Regional Pump Station. This is the pump station that is going to allow us to abandon the lift station that's currently on the golf course. It's been in, in design and discussion now for several years. We secured the state revolving fund loan, loans in a total of thirty-seven million. That was not just for the pump station, but that was for the pump station, the force main, and the headworks, which is the main screening facility. We had roughly ten point four million in estimated cost for this. We had eleven bidders. Low bid came in at seven point two nine three million, which was very exciting to us, and we hope that the other projects will follow suit so that that thirty-seven million dollar loan will not have to be fully expended, but that we will, if we can see savings like this on these other projects, then we may be looking at more in a, you know, high twenty-eight, twenty-nine million type, type lump. It's a good start. But anyway, we would request approval for the low bidder of Garnet Construction, the base bid amount of seven point two nine three, one hundred and thirty dollars, seven million two hundred ninety-three thousand, one hundred and thirty dollars.
All right, you have this recommendation from the Director of the Water and Sewer Department. You also have the bid tabulation, the low three bidders from SSR and their recommendation that this is in fact the low bid. Are there any questions regarding approval to award this Southwest Regional Pump Station bid and the Resident Project Representative Inspection Services? If there are no questions, is there a motion to accept?
Move to accept.
Motion and second, please call the roll.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye.
Last item, and I think this will dovetail with Mr. Crumley's last item on the agenda, but the SRF, the state revolving loan refinance opportunity that we just recently went through with great help from City Hall, Ms. Wright, Mr. Crumley, Mr. Swan, sitting here in the We were, we had about a twenty-eight million dollar state revolving fund loan that we were wanting to refinance. I think we basically had that at around three and a half percent interest, and based on the RFPs we received today, we're getting that down to about a one point three, four percent interest, which is going to net us about a five hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars a year on our annual outlay on debt service. So very exciting. Part of this component, though, is to pay off SRF Loans Ninety-Six, Oh Eighty-Nine, and Oh Oh One Forty-Eight. Those two combined principal are approximately one point five million. We have the reserves on hand to make that, to pay off those two loans, and we would request that you approve us paying off that one point five million and moving forward with the refinance.
All right, is there a motion to approve this refinancing opportunity?
So moved. Second.
Thank you, motion and second, please call the roll.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Gore.
Thank you, Council.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Help yourself with some job security here.
It's not a bone.
This time we'll hear from Assistant City Manager with regards to refinancing of the Water and Sewer and Airport Debt Considered for Adoption Resolution Authorizing Issuance of General Obligation Airport Refunding Capital Outlay Notes in the Amount of Approximately One Point Nine One Five Million Dollars, and Considered for Adoption Resolution Authorizing Issuance of Water and Sewer Revenue and Tax Refunding Bonds in the Amount of Approximately Twenty-Eight Point One One Five Million Dollars. Mr. Crumley, welcome.
Mayor and City Council, I do not have a PowerPoint presentation for you tonight, but I do have good news. The hard work of your staff, particularly Melissa and Susan, Doug and Darren in the Water Department, and to a lesser degree Chad Gurkey at the airport, on the refinancing of twenty-eight point six million dollars in Water Sewer Loans, one point eight seven million dollars in taxable airport loans. There's a memo on your desk dated today concerning the refinancing. We had six bidders this morning at eleven o'clock. PNC Bank is the low bidder, a rate of one point three four on the tax-exempt Water Sewer Debt, a rate of one point six six on the taxable airport debt. The good news is, this results in about four hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year in savings over the life of these bonds to the Water and Sewer Department, about forty-seven thousand dollars a year at the airport. You've got three actions that we recommend you take tonight. The first two are the adoption of the resolutions to authorize these borrowings. That would be Thirteen R-Oh-Seven for the airport and Thirteen R-Oh-Eight for Water and Sewer. And lastly, the award of those bonds to the low bidder, PNC Bank. If you have any questions, be glad to try to answer them.
Any questions for Mr. Crumley regarding this recommendation?
Is that one motion or three motions?
All right, is there a motion to adopt the bond resolutions? And there are two, one for Water and Sewer Department and one for the airport.
And I believe Ms. McGannon is saying she wants two separate motions, and so with that, I guess first move for adoption of Resolution Thirteen R-Oh-Seven.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, Mr. Gilli and Mr. Smotherman, adopt the Bond Resolution Thirteen R-Oh-Seven, please call the roll.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye.
And is there a motion to accept and approve the low bidder, PNC Bank, for the refinancing of both these loans?
So moved. Second.
Thank you, motion and second, please call the roll.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye.
At this time, are there any beer permit applications?
Yes, Mayor, we have two tonight. These are still pending, they're final building and codes inspections, but upon approval of those, we would like to issue a permit for a location at four oh five North Front Street. I believe that's going to be more like a tavern-type establishment, and a restaurant at three fifty-two West Dorffield Boulevard, which is an ownership change of an existing restaurant.
All right, you have a motion and a, I'm sorry, you have these two beer permit applications that meet our requirements. Is there a motion to accept?
So moved. Second.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye.
You have these statements before you to be considered for payment?
Move for, that we pay the bills. Second.
All right. No questions? Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye.
I make these Board and Commission Appointment Recommendations to you to reappoint to the Water and Sewer Board, Mr. Clay Beach, to reappoint to the Airport Board, Mr. John Polk, to formalize that Mr. Ron Ferrara is the new Dean of the Aerospace Department or the Applied Science instead of Dean Tom Cheatham, and so Ron Ferrara would be on our Airport Board, and also to make the appointment of Clay Cook to replace Mr. Steve Lane on the Airport Board. I make these recommendations to you.
Move we accept the recommendations, the mayor. Second.
Motion and second, please call the roll.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye.
Is there other business from staff or council to come before the council at this time?
Mayor, I've got two items.
Mr. Lyons.
One of these is a letter from Mr. Chris Griffith that I'll present on his behalf. As you all are aware, the Singer Sewing Machine Facility is being redeveloped into a four-hundred-thousand square foot building to support Nissan. This project's going to have some significant truck traffic, and so the city did require improvements to Singer Road. The improvements to Singer Road will be done in two sections. The first portion will be from the West Driveway to Florence Road, and that is going to be developed and funded by the developer. There is no city money in that. However, as Huddleston Steel designed improvements to Singer Road, it did require acquisition of right-of-way and easements, and so what the recommendation we have for you this evening is to acquire the property for the improvements to Singer Road. There's two properties that are involved, the two right-of-way takes and easement total about thirty thousand dollars that would be funded by the developer. So we would ask for your approval to follow the city's standard procedure, which is to send a letter to the property owner that includes the appraisal. If they voluntarily accept that, there's, be a ten percent payment on top of that. They'd be given two weeks to review that. If they do find an error and present additional information to us, we would adjust our amount. However, if they did not accept the city's amount, that we would follow the condemnation process and file the thirty thousand dollar amount into court. So we would ask for your approval this evening.
All right, are there any questions to Mr. Lyons regarding this recommendation? If not, is there a motion to accept?
Move to accept. Second.
All right, thank you. Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye.
Mr. Lyons.
Lastly, I'd like to talk to you this evening about your budget review work sessions. As you know, I've got to get the budget to you no later than May the fifteenth. So the dates I am proposing for budget review, in the past, we've been able to accomplish these in two dates with a third date held in reserve. So the three dates that I would propose to you would be Tuesday, May twenty-first at four PM, where we would cover outside agencies and some city departments; Thursday, May twenty-third at five PM for the remaining city departments; and Monday, June the third, if necessary, that following Thursday, June the sixth, is when you will have your budget public hearing. So it would be my suggestion to you.
June the sixth, is the bu, part?
Is the budget public hearing, yes, sir.
Mr. Lyons, the date of the twenty-first of May is a conference for the Power Board, and I will be out of town at the Power Board Conference.
Okay.
And likewise, I will also be out of town.
Okay. I did try to identify some alternative dates for you, and those would be Tuesday, May
you will have your budget public hearing, so it would be my suggestion to you.
June the 6th?
Is the budget public hearing, yes, sir.
Mr. Lyons, the date of the 21st of May is a conference for the Power Board, and I will be out of town at the Power Board conference.
Okay.
And likewise, I will also be out of town.
Okay. I did try to identify some alternative dates for you, and those would be Tuesday, May 28th, or Thursday, May the 30th.
You fine with both of those?
Okay. We've typically done the outside agency meeting starting at 4:00 p.m. since some of them are already at work, so the Thursday, May 23rd at 4:00 p.m., if that would be acceptable?
So we drop the 21st, is that correct?
I believe Mr. Gilli had a conflict. So the first session would be Thursday, May 23rd at 4:00 p.m.
Would it be possible to move it to 5?
Do you have a?
Start at 5. 4:30? 5? Tea time? Got a tea time? No. I am trying to keep up revenue out of the house. The 23rd at 5, would that be all right? And then if we go into the council time?
Okay.
Very good.
23rd at 5:00 p.m.
And then the other budget hearing would be the 28th, is that correct?
28th at 5:00 p.m.
Is that all right?
That's good. And then Monday, June the 3rd is the third date if necessary? At 5:00 p.m.
And June the 3rd? Okay, that would be as necessary.
Yes, sir.
All right. You have these dates, council members. Would you like to formalize those in the form of a motion? If not, is there anything else, any other business from staff or council to come before the council at this time? Mr. Smotherman?
Aye, yes. Something took place tonight and at the previous meeting, and I just want to make note of it and make a comment on it, and then I've got one other thing I'd like to say about the events of the week. Earlier tonight, we did a vote, and I'm not concerned with the outcome of the vote, but I'll ask a couple of questions here. You know, is it wrong when you're leaving a room to let the door close on the person behind you? And I'd say, no, it's not wrong, it's not illegal, but it's disrespectful. Is it illegal to not give a person food who's on the side of the road and you know is truly hungry? No, it's not illegal, but it's wrong and it's disrespectful. Is it illegal to manipulate the outcome of a vote on the City Council by tampering with the agenda? No, it's not illegal, but it is wrong and it's disrespectful. It's disrespectful to those who come to the meetings to not allow them to conduct the city's business, the business that they have taken an oath to do. I want to be on record stating, if I should miss a meeting, I want those present to conduct the business, and there's no disrespect towards me should they do so. In light of the events that took place this past week, I was reading this afternoon a quote by Dr. or Reverend Martin Luther King, and it's, I'll quote him. "When evil men plot, good men must plan; when evil men burn and bomb, good men must build and buy; when evil men shout ugly words and hatred, good men must commit themselves to the glories of love." And I think that's appropriate this week as well as it was 50 years ago, and certainly our hearts go out and our prayers go out to those who were affected by the bombings and the events that took place in Texas last night. That's all of that.
Any other business coming before the council?
I have a comment.
Ms. Harris?
I think, Mr. Smotherman, you are alluding to the vote that came up about the Bike Way I would like to see the council, Ms. McGannon, we have something, we adopt a procedure we go by that states that if we have a quorum, that we do conduct this business, because we conducted business on everything two weeks ago but one item, and if the vote had gone like it had been going, that item would not have passed if we had also voted on that item and not deferred that until all members were present. So I would like to see us adopt a procedure, because I know sometimes I am out, and it's a disrespecting me that the council vote on items when I'm not here. I mean, I'm sure business goes on, so I think it's in order that we adopt some kind of procedure, so it won't appear that we are padding votes, are padding outcomes of votes. I received a few phone calls from some of the citizens on that item, and so, not that we're not above board, but I think we have to have a procedure in writing, so that won't happen again.
Ms. Gels, I asked Ms. McGannon last, two weeks ago, following the event that took place, would she ask if there was any interest in doing just what you asked for? And I think she surveyed the council members, and Ms. McGannon, I'll let you give us the results of what the survey showed.
Well, you asked me if there was interest in my trying to develop some procedural rules that would formalize the issue for standards for votes to defer. A vote to defer being something that is a common parliamentary rule that this council has followed for many years, and you were interested in whether there was interest in council members in establishing some criteria for that as opposed to what had been the past practice of decisions being made based on the facts and circumstances that might be presented at any given council meeting. And without polling, because that would be inappropriate, or sharing who said what to you, I indicated to you that there was not, from the conversations I had, an interest in changing that longstanding practice, but that I was ready if a council, if the council as a whole or a council member wanted to have something drafted that would change the rules of order that we've followed to establish some criteria, I was certainly willing and available to do that, but that there did not appear to be an interest in doing so from the conversations that I had.
Anything else?
Well, I would like to make a motion that we do adopt a procedure for conducting the business of the city. If we have a quorum present, that we should vote on items and not wait until some people are here, some are not, because it will have a great impact on the way a vote goes. And that particular item, if we had voted like we had voted on the first and second reading, last Thursday night, that vote would not have passed. But tonight, with everyone here, and it went the way it had gone, the first and second reading, it did pass. So by just eliminating us not voting on that one item, and we say it was out of respect, then did we respect the ones that were here that could have voted? So I would like to make a motion that we do adopt a procedure. When we have a quorum present, that we handle, conduct the business of the city, which we were elected to do from our taxpayers, if we have a quorum.
Would you like to prepare that procedure so that we could look at it before we vote on it?
I would like for it to come from the legal department, because I think the wordage would be, well...
Would you like to state what that procedure would be?
Well, in essence, if we have a quorum, quorum present at a council meeting, we should vote on all items and not pick and choose what items we vote on, because it will, and it has, it was proven, the outcome will be highly effective when we pick and choose what we're going to vote on, even if a quorum is present.
We did have a vote that night, and we had a vote to defer.
Right, but...
So you're going to, procedure would be no votes to defer?
No.
I just wanted to make a quick comment.
Mr. McFarland?
Feel like I'm sitting here in a conversation that I didn't get to take place in. I think what the council members, and this is in no disrespect to you guys, what you're referring to is the Greenway and bike plan that was brought up a couple of weeks ago. That was spring break for the county and, in essence, spring break for the city as well, so I, from my standpoint, and I expect the same with other council members, I've run two times in council, and I make no bones that my faith and family come first, and so, you know, I would tell the residents now, that's just the type of person I am. So we went on spring break with my kids, so I wasn't here for the vote, and I know this is not directed towards me, so I don't, I don't have any hard feelings about it, but, and I know, I understand that Councilman Washington's wife's car broke down and that she was on the side of the road, so, and that's something I understand from time to time happens, much like, I think, August the 22nd, when my son was born and that we were in the hospital, he was born on a Wednesday night, and you guys out of, the council members out of respect to me, which I was called the swing vote on the Airport Commission, that was deferred so I could get back and vote, and honestly, I would have been perfectly fine if y'all went ahead and voted on that without me here. But, you know, the one thing I, when I'm listening, you know, I think the great thing about being on the council, sometimes we agree to disagree, and then we drop it and we move on, and I, anything that we can do to keep, I don't want to say divisive or gamesmanship or whatever out, I'm all for not doing that, and so whether it be a family member that's passed away, or going to a kid's sporting event or whatever, I respect each one of y'all enough to know that if you voted on something twice, I don't assume that you've changed your mind when third reading comes, that you've made it clear what your point is, and I respect both of you, all of you enough to know that, that if it's a, if it's an item that is a contentious item, that it's a, not a unanimous vote, that I respect you enough that I want to hear your opinion when the third, second, first reading comes along, so I guess what I'm saying is I agree to disagree, that I am perfectly fine saying to the other council members, I respect you, I trust you, and that if it's a, if it's a contentious vote, it's not a, that one vote is the difference, and it's been that way for two times, then I'm fine keeping it, just like I would say that if it's a vote that is a major community issue, that I would want your opinion as a council member to be here, and feel like I owe you that respect if something happens. We can't help if a family member passes away or some, life happens, and we can't help that, and so I'm fine with saying, you know, I'll wait, unless it's, I'll wait, I'm fine with it.
So you're saying, keep the discretion up. We voted on a case-by-case basis, whether we defer an issue as opposed to having a hard and fast rule as we've done in the past.
I hate putting anything like that, that we say this is how it's going to be hard and fast when life happens and circumstances happen. Vice Mayor Washington didn't know that his wife's car was going to break down, and I would have been more upset with him if he'd left his wife on the side of the road and not gone and helped her out, so it, stuff happens, and so I'm perfectly fine just saying, you know, now if it's something where we see a council member decides that they're not going to show up because they just don't want to vote on the issue, that's different. But we've never had that happen, so, I mean, I know when I left for spring break, I let everyone two weeks ahead of time know, we're going on spring break, I won't be here, so that's why it was an excused absence, so if we start seeing council members just don't show up, just because they don't show up, then that's different, but I don't, we've never had that case happen, or at least I haven't seen it happen, so.
Mr. McFarland, I do respect that, because I'm the same way. I have a sick mother, and she is number one. God first, my family second, but, and I'm also saying, and I'm not, you know, if my son was here and we went on spring, spring break, I probably would take him, but, you know, that was the choice I would have made, but I am saying, we are elected officials, elected by the taxpayers to conduct the business of the city, and I strongly feel if we have a quorum, that we should conduct the business of the city on items that come before us on the agenda. And here again, we're agreeing to disagree, but that's just how I feel.
And Ms. Gels Harris, I agree with you wholeheartedly in the sense that my son was on spring break that week, and I was at the meeting, and I think it's disrespectful to those present to not allow them to vote and conduct the city's business, but we know that that particular item would have been voted on differently had we voted on it. So therefore, a motion was made, and it was seconded properly, and it was deferred, but I think that is a bad practice to determine the outcome of the vote based on who's present at the meeting, and that's my point, it's, and I understand in the event of an emergency, it's a different situation, but if you choose to go on vacation or you choose to go play golf and just not come to that particular meeting, you have made a decision and placed to vote by not coming to the meeting, even if you've chosen not to come. And what we should do is allow those people who are present at the meeting, or give them the respect of allowing them to conduct the city's business, and I'll second your motion.
All right, you have a motion and second?
Mayor, I'd just like to make one last comment.
Mr. McFarland?
I think that the, one of the reasons that Murphysboro is in the situation that we are, that we not only treat our residents with respect, our business owners with respect, our employees with respect, we treat council members with respect, and in my humble opinion, that if a vote on first and second reading, the council votes exactly, whether, I've been on the opposite end of losing and winning on a vote, but I think if the council member, if the council as a whole votes on first reading to pass something, and they vote on second reading to pass something, and it's the will of the council, then I think that sometimes you just have to say it's the will of the council, and if you're counting on somebody to not be present, at some point, it looks like crying over spilled milk. So I think that sometimes you have to go with the will of the council, and it works for you and works against you. And my point, when I wasn't, was we were in the hospital with our kid that was born, it put me in an awful situation when I was, when it was deferred, and I was seen as the swing vote, when in essence, I was, I would have been the third person who was voting. So in that case, it was a major community decision, and the council decided that they felt like that was something that I needed to participate in, and with that, I respect the council and appreciate the council that they want in my opinion on that, so.
Mr. Gilli?
Just going to say, even if we were to have such a rule and made allowances for emergencies, we'd have been in the same position two weeks ago, because I would certainly think that by mayor's situation would have qualified for a family emergency and placed us in the exact same position that we're in, even leaving Shane's situation out, and I think the thing that we have to keep in mind is that, given the size body we are, that overall, we look towards statesmanship as opposed to gamesmanship.
And Toby, I agree with you, but when it affects the outcome of the vote, I think we've gone beyond gamesmanship and statesmanship, because, and it's not winning and losing this particular vote, because to me, it really, this particular issue is not something I'm emphatic about or something I have a great deal of passion for or against. I think that particular item, I'm all in favor of expanding the Greenway, I'm all in favor of doubling the Greenway in the next 25 years. I just think the plan itself was unrealistic, and so my opposition was not in opposition, I think I had a problem with the plan. The first 12 miles or so of that Greenway, we've all had inside the city here. It's all running along, park property, golf courses, a trailer park, commercial properties who didn't care that there was a sidewalk between them and the river. As this project expands, it's a completely different expansion. We have not notified those people outside the area and told them, we have drawn a line across your property, and we're going to plan building a Greenway across it, or a bike way across it.
Before we get too far, and I appreciate your comments, and I certainly, I don't want to cut you off, but we voted on that plan, and at this time, we have a motion that Ms. Harris has made, and you have seconded. So if there's other questions regarding that motion, that would be probably more susceptible to talking about now instead of that plan. Obviously, I don't want to cut you off, but your motion was there, and your second was there, so let's talk about that motion. And if you're not, if there are no other comments regarding that motion, I certainly would ask Ms. Wright to call for a vote. Why don't you call the roll?
Mr. Gilli.
No.
Ms. Gels Harris.
We are voting now on whether we should have procedures, and I'm saying yes, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
We've been talking about so much, okay.
Okay.
I'm back with you.
Mr. McFarland.
No.
Mr. Smotherman.
Yes.
Mr. Washington.
No.
Mr. Young.
No.
Mayor Bragg.
No. Now, you might have some comments regarding the plan that you wanted to talk about.
No, I'll say that's in the past, and we'll continue forward.
I would say one thing, that not only seemingly it was a, we called it a respect vote, we disrespected the taxpayers who elected us, I feel like, that night, because they elected us to conduct the business of the city that comes before us on the agenda. And we did not do that. But the majority rules, I'm okay. We're okay.
And I would like for us to keep in mind that, you know, with Murphysboro, we've still got main thoroughfares, where we've got kids walking in the road on the way to school, but yet we want to build a sidewalk that goes down the river through the county. And I just, I have a difficult time understanding why everybody is so emphatic about us building a sidewalk to Brown's Mill or Walter Hill, when we've got Jones Boulevard and kids walk on that road every day, and we don't have a sidewalk for them to walk on. So it, I think it's a matter of priorities and importance, and I've used the Greenway three times in the past week. So it's not that I'm opposed to the Greenway, it's not that I don't enjoy the Greenway. I used it yesterday, I walked about two miles on it, and I passed two people. It's not overcrowded. It's not overcongested. The, I rode the entire length of it about two weeks ago, and another beautiful day, and in the 12 or so miles that I rode one way, I passed 15 people. It's not overcrowded, it's not overused. And I know as our city grows, that the usage of it will continue, but when we continue to build out into the countryside, we will find the same exact issues that we have with our current Greenway system will carry over to the Greenway system outside the city. And when we do that, we're opening ourselves up to the same exact situation that we have, where we're spending a half million dollars on a pond and a dropout next to the sidewalk. And it's, it's a misuse of taxpayers' money to continually spend things on amenities that people want and not things that people need.
Mr. Lyons, I would ask, I would ask you if you wouldn't mind doing something for us for our next council meeting. As we talk about the, Mr. Smotherman brought up the gateway, I think it'd be good if you wouldn't mind giving the council a recap on, I know you can easily do this, but the total infrastructure that we put out in the gateway, but let's pull up property tax dollars that are paid on the buildings that are out in the gateway, sales tax dollars, which half of that go to our county school system. So I think it'd be good if we, since we're talking about the gateway pond and things like that, let's pull up what the financial impact of that area has been.
Be glad to.
And so that way, we can get sort of a totality of what's happened out there.
Yes, sir, be glad to.
Anything else? If not, you adjourn.